Good afternoon. I'd like to bring the regular afternoon meeting of Township Atlantic Council to order. And the first items, adopt or receive the agenda items. There's one change. I would like to ask council if we put Report F1 right after presentation D1 and Report F2 after presentation D2. So if I could have a motion to adopt the agenda. Councillor Kuntz moves. Second by councillor Arneson.
Your worship, to delete the agenda and to delete the delegation in the afternoon, the withdrawn delegation.
Yeah, there's, yes. E1 has been withdrawn, so with that, change two. I'll accept that. And so I'm gonna get the motion on the floor, and I know that there's a late delegation. We're gonna do that as an amendment. So councillor Richter, did you wish to speak to?
Yeah, the late delegation, I want to move.
Yeah, so we're gonna add that as an amendment. So first we'll do the agenda, and then you can move it as an amendment. I'll just leave your mic on for that. Okay, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Posse carried. Okay, councillor Richter?
Yes, I'd like to move approval of the late delegation for this evening's meeting.
There is seconded. Councillor Davis seconds. Discussion. Is there a, we, just to get some clarification from the clerk. I know we have a policy about late delegations, if it's not on the agenda. So I just want to clarify if there's an emergent reason why this delegation needs to come today rather than following the normal process, and why council would consider.
As I spoke to the delegation this morning, he believed that it was a timely issue, that he would like seen today. It would require a two-thirds vote of council in order to put aside the requirements of the procedure bylaw, but it is possible.
Okay, thank you. So just on this one, I've spoken to this gentleman, and I think he spent a lot of time speaking to our staff. And I did speak to him last week, and asked him if this was an emergent situation. He said it wasn't. I know there's some concerns, he certainly has, and certainly I'd like to hear from him, but I think for my part, I'd like to hear the delegation out of the normal process. So certainly he is welcome to come next time, but I'll leave that up to council. So with that, I'm gonna use the buttons to call the vote. Did you wish to speak to it?
Well, I just wanted to just thank you, worship. How many delegations do you have? I just can go to the agenda and see. So would he be, that would make how many delegations?
Okay, we have, that would be five.
Four plus this one will make five.
Yeah, that would make five. I'm just talking about the process that we have.
If it's over five, it would be another issue.
Okay, I'll call a question on that.
Well, I did have a question about this.
Sure.
I mean, I, you know.
Yeah, that's fine.
In our existing procedure bylaw, 1302, says late delegations to speak as a delegation can be submitted by 10:00 AM of the day of the regular meeting, but it says for on-agenda items only, which I don't think is right. I mean, how do you get to be on the agenda if you can't make a delegation?
Then you, then, well, I think with the, if it's an on-agenda item, they can speak to that agenda item. If it's not on agenda, then there's no, it's not something council's doing that night. They can come to the next meeting and give proper notice. That's why that's there. So, so I'll call the question on this one, A1. And carries, two-thirds vote with councillor Kuntz and mayor Frosick opposed. Move on to adoption minutes, B1, B2, and B3. That's the afternoon council meeting of February 11th, special meeting for budget purpose February 4th, and reconvene special meeting for budget purpose February 7th. Can I have a motion for all three?
Bill moves.
Councillor Ferguson, second. Councillor Arneson, any errors or missions? All those in favor? Posse carried. Now, as for motion to resolve into special closed for items on the agenda and on table, can I have a motion, please?
Bill moves.
Councillor Davis, second. By councillor, second councillor Kuntz, and councillor Richter, give an item.
Yeah, I'd like to add a personnel item.
Personnel. Councillor Woodward?
I'd like to add a legal item and another matter.
Legal?
Legal.
Okay.
And another matter. Didn't know what category to use.
Okay, we'll figure that out when we get another, and another, we'll call it.
Well, sometimes that's on the agenda, another matter, so.
Yeah. Okay, with that, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Posse carried. Moving to close. To reconvene the regular afternoon meeting of Township Atlantic Council. Next item on the agenda is D1, the 2019 budget public consultation results, a presentation from staff. Good afternoon, Ms. Sinclair.
Your worship, just while Karen gets ready to go, this is a, I want to make sure we understand the context. So this is really a continuation of our last budget meeting session. So what we're basing the preliminary comments on is effectively where we left off, because that's our direction. We're augmenting those with additional information we received from the public consultation session, keeping in mind that, that once council has that information, we'll be looking for the information from council themselves. So this is not particularly based on any comments from anyone from council, in fact, just the opposite. This is kind of pre those comments being registered. We had some of the verbal comments through the process, but we know some of you have worked long and hard on some of the budget information sessions, and we're looking forward to having that now officially relayed to us so we can go in the next direction. So what does that look like then in terms of as to the next direction? It may be council gives us direction today. It may be that council deliberates and says, given the time, that we may need to have additional session or sessions, if we so choose. Or it may be that we can go right to the next meeting, which where the bylaws will be introduced, and as a last resort, introduce amendments to those bylaws at that point. It's really what council wishes to see from this. So Karen, we'll try to give you just a brief snapshot of where we've been, what the, and Sam as well, as to what the information we've received is, and then we can talk about the next steps and where we go from there.
Thank you.
Your worship, members of council, we have brought an update on the public consultation as the, the numbers included in your report were, was quite a compressed public consultation period, so we've been receiving additional public consultation results. And Mr. Nam is gonna update everybody on those results that we've received.
So these, most of these slides will be similar to what was in the report, it was just with the updated response. So from, from these graphs, you can see on the police, roughly 50% is to maintain the existing funding, and we have roughly about the same for increasing and decreasing, around On the fire, we have, again, a 40% of vote to maintain existing funding, with roughly around 35% for, in favor of decreasing funding. Here we have transportation and recreation and culture. They're both roughly around the 60 to 65% to maintain existing funding. For transportation, roughly around the same for increasing and decreasing, at around 20% each. For recreation, there's about 26% in favor of increasing or assisting funding. For facility, majority of the vote, 79% were to, in support of maintaining existing funding, around 12% in favor of increasing funding. For parks, we have around 47% to maintain existing funding, with 41% in favor of increasing Stormwater had a 70% vote to maintain existing funding, with roughly around the same for increasing and decreasing funding at 15% each. And we end off with general government, with 50% to maintain funding, and 41% of the vote to decrease funding.
Councillor Richter had a question on the last slide.
Yeah. Our report here, it says general government, 60% of the vote supported decreasing existing funding. 20% voted for maintaining and 20 supported for increasing.
Right, so on these slide, we've updated the response since the report. More response that came in after, on Friday till today. So these are as of roughly around 3:00, 3:00 o'clock today.
So, from the time we got this report, there were 61 people who had responded. How many have responded now?
61 was, I, we had about 25 of heart copy responses, and we had about 34 in online responses.
Plus, plus the ones that came to the open house.
Yeah, and we had a large majority of responses on just one particular project, which we didn't include in the, in the numbers.
Thank you.
Then we're on to, one other question that was posed was how the person perceive their value for their tax dollar. Majority at around 58% say they do, they get fairly good value, with roughly 16% that believe they're getting fairly poor value. In terms of support for the proposed 2.93 base tax increase, we have about 51% that responded in support of, and 21% neutral, with 28% opposed.
Councillor Ferguson has a question.
Just a real quick clarification. Now, you've made your, your police, fire, transportation, all very specific. It's, the general government, do the folks or the residents know what general government is when they're saying, here's an opportunity to make a comment, either one way or another?
Within the questionnaire, we provide a brief description of what general government cover, so there, there are some information in there to provide them with the understanding of what those expenditures are.
Okay, thank you.
Then we go down to the support of the commitment for protective services. On the respondents here, roughly 61% are in between the strongly support to support, with a 14% of opposed or strongly opposed. And our next question was in the transportation infrastructure capital funding for the additional 500,000 in contribution to capital. We got roughly 47% that support. We have about 44% that was kind of neutral or no opinion. Within our facility infrastructure capital funding question, we received 53% of strongly support, and 21% of neutral, and another 12% of no opinion, with 14% strongly opposed or just opposed. And for within parks, 400,000 contribution to capital, we received 60% strongly support, with 26% neutral, and 5% strongly opposed. Then we have our parks contribution that was to fund the proposed MAP project. We received 65% that was in the strongly support or support, with 14% strongly opposed or opposed. Then we have technology, commitment to sustainable technology. Here we have a 41% that answer neutral or no opinion, and 33% that strongly support. Within our recreation service question, we received a 49% in support of, with roughly 28% that replied neutral or no opinion. And within the engineering service, there was about 56% that was neutral or no opinion, and 28% strongly support. Within our commitment to development, we receive 53% of strongly support or support, and 33% of neutral or no opinion. With the support of the proposed user fee increase in water services, we receive 44% of strongly support or support, and 35% for neutral or no opinion. This is based on a 21% of residents that are in the township water, and 79% answer that they were on private well. Within the support for proposed user fee increase in sewer, we have 37% that answer neutral or no opinion, and 35% in favor of the increase. Out of the respondents, 62% belongs in private septic system, 38% is township sewer system. And we have solid waste, 47% reply with neutral or no opinion, and 30% strongly opposed or opposed. This is based on a 28% reply that they are on township solid waste collection, and 72% belong in private pickup. Then we have our question for the top three most important issue that they believe should have the greatest attention from our leaders. The top three being number one for parks, number two is growth, and majority say too much growth, with the two items that are tied for third being crime and transportation.
So that brings us the update of the public consultation items from the report, and we did receive quite a few over the weekend, so that's why the numbers changed. They went up quite a bit. The next item that we have on our agenda today is the items that were flagged, the capital items that were flagged.
Here we have the list of capital project that we took to public consultation in asking if they support the funding of these project. For the McLeod Athletic Park, we received five, both for yes, and five for neutral. For the 208 Street Quarter, we received five yes, three no's, and two neutral. Transportation, the 216th Street Improvement Highway 1 to 96 Avenue, we received a, a group of survey that came in together. That's why we're getting a 107 vote of yes, with two no and two neutral. With the 107, the respondent came in with just the one project. They pretty much ignore all the other projects, so this is why the response aren't kind of equal for all the projects. Traffic signal at Glover Road and 96 Avenue, we received, I believe, around four that came together, with just this one project identified in support of. We have two and two for no and neutral. Then the road reconstruction, street lighting in McBride Lane, we have a tie vote for four at yes and no, and two for neutral. Then we have our sidewalk, 206th Street, we received four yes and four neutral, with two voting no. Our sidewalk improvement at 272nd Street, we received five yes, three neutral and two no. And the next two, Langley Hospice Society and the Lower Mainland Flood Management Study, both receive just yes vote.
So that, that brings us pretty much to the update of the one item I would like to put out there now, as well as in the 4.95% tax increase that we had, that we're landed at right now, it includes a, an additional contribution to capital for transportation, one for parks and one for facilities. And we, the next few slides show what the next priorities were in each of those categories for funding. So for example, in transportation, there's $500,000 contribution to capital, that's part of the 4.95, and if we were going to use that $500,000, we would pick the next highest priorities, which, which Mr. Nam has identified here in the top of this slide, these top items here. So we would use the $500,000 until it was gone, so you could see it would probably, pretty much just fund our share of this annual commuter cycling improvements. And these next two, if we were going straight by the numbers, would not get funded. But we're also aware that some of the council flagged items are listed below here, and they're also transportation. So we've put those on the same slide so that they can be considered or discussed with, by council. And then we've done the same process for facilities, there's 450,000, and then for parks, there's 400,000. So that's sort of an area where we can launch into the, some discussion about which projects to fund with that additional contribution to capital that's part of the 4.95%.
Thank you. So is this the part where Mr. Backen said perhaps we need another meeting? There's a lot of meat in this presentation that could, could have some more discussion.
Worship, we have some time today, perhaps just a flavor for it, because I know some members of council have done a lot of due diligence on this, and it may be necessary to just even consider their comments.
Yeah, for sure. So what point would be, it'd be a good point now to entertain questions from council and any, any ideas they have? So I'll open up to council if there's any, anything they want. I think this is, you've done a lot of work, really appreciate it. Interesting to see those results from the public consultation, a lot of neutral, a lot of in favor.
Right.
And, you know, especially the one with MAP, interested me 100% in favor, but out of 10 votes, so it's a small, small number. We're dealing with small numbers in comparison to the entire township. So with, so I don't have any speakers, is there more to present, or I can start going into some motions here?
I think, yeah, you could definitely go into some motions, sir.
So what I'd like to do right now is entertain a motion, first of all, to receive the report, and we'll make sure we break this all down. Councillor Ferguson moves to seat. Councillor Woodward seconds it, so on receipt, any discussion. Call a question on that, F1. It's on receipt. Carries unanimously. And the next, so that one's passed. So we move on to the next one, where council directs after bringing forward, for consideration the draft 2019-23 financial plan to the regular afternoon council meeting on March 11th. Could we have a motion on that? Councillor Long moves, seconded. Councillor Kuntz, discussion on that one. Councillor, did you wish, something going on?
Yeah, if we're gonna just talk about the 11th now.
You want to do, request a speak?
Oh, yes, not in favor, yeah.
Councillor Woodward?
Thanks for that help. Yeah, so I wanted to, maybe I will just, now that we've got a motion about the 11th, I did have a couple of questions regarding the specifics of the 4.5. So none of the items listed under the projects flagged by council for public consultation are currently within that, other than McLeod.
That's correct.
In that entire list. So if we were to add these, they would either come from these contributions to capital, which are currently unattributed?
Right.
Or we would be increasing the 4.5, 4.95?
Or, or changing something that's currently funded to not funded.
Not funded, yeah, which, which would make sense. Okay. I think you and I have, just so council's aware, you and I have exchanged a couple of emails, and I think it's, if we wanted to say borrow money for a portion of the McLeod improvements, how might that work?
So if we, if we did borrow money, we could decide if we're gonna borrow for just the 750, which is currently coming from the 4.95% tax increase, or we could borrow for the entire project, which would then free up some reserves to fund other, other projects. So this is where the discussion could get quite meaty. The, the total funding, if we were to, if we were to borrow for the whole 5.1 million, the borrowing that we'd have to add, or the debt servicing would be about $350,000. So we'd have to, we'd, we'd have to add that to the, to the base. So we'd remove the 750, the 750 would come out of the, the base, which is about 0.59%, and then we'd have to add in about a little over a quarter of a percent.
So those are the two options you presented, but of course, we could borrow for a portion of them.
Anything in between, yeah.
So for example, just as the sake of a, of an example, maybe one of the more optional items, which isn't, and I define optional, is not required to fulfill our obligations to the track and field championships. That'd be just a temporary definition of optional. We could potentially borrow for some of that and then fund other projects, or reduce the amount of the tax increase, or some combination of thereof. So is it possible to sort of just generically say, say if we were to borrow a million dollars, what is the debt servicing obligation of that? What fund would it come from, and what would the annual cost of that be? Just as, just for council's information.
So the debt, the debt servicing would come, if the, typically if the project is a transportation project, then the debt servicing would come from the tax increase attributable to the roads or transportation budget and operations. In terms of the, do you recall the one, the 1 million was? I've got it.
Well, there's a, there's a facilities line item in the, in the debt servicing summary that you provided to us. There was facility improvement. So can you give me an example of what we fund out of that category that we're borrowing money for?
The, the facility improvements that exist currently?
Right now, when we, when you showed me a summary, you showed us a summary of the debt servicing obligations that we currently have. One of the categories, of course, is DCCs.
Yeah.
Another category was facility improvement, which we currently have some borrowing from.
Right.
Which is coming from operating revenue? We're servicing that with operating revenue. Could you up to, give us a background on what project? This is an example of how that might work.
Yeah, 1.5 million of that was for seating upgrade at Langley Event Center, which I believe is finished, if I'm not mistaken. And the balance of it was for work at the Yorkson Community Park Stadium work.
Okay, and so how does the debt servicing work? Are you, are we pre-funding the debt servicing, or are we pulling that out of the operating funding every year? So when I asked you about the potential for borrowing?
Yeah.
You, you removed sort of what I would call a debt reserve to fund interest payments, but that's not quite what it was, right?
The debt reserve is just, is just a reserve that we have, that's, that we've called the debt reserve, because we've moved, we've moved debt that didn't come to fruition, so it would have, it would have ended up in surplus. We moved it into the debt reserve so that we could either decide not to borrow quite as much when the time came, when we've finished the project, or we could pay off debt early, or we could use it for internal borrowing, or other, other things that council might, might use it for.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna try to get to, because I think that I'm using different terminology in the private sector than what you use. So for example, if I borrow a million dollars, I think some of the emails we exchanged suggesting that it wouldn't reduce the, the budget by a million dollars, it would reduce it by sake of argument 900,000, and then you would set 100,000 aside in some form to pay the interest, right?
The debt, the principal and interest, correct.
Right, so there, but if we, if, so right now, I think 1% is to, 1.293, something like that?
1,269,000.
Oh, wow, okay, so I was close. But, so around 1.2, so if we were to borrow 1.2, we, we didn't have 1.2 to then go and spend on other projects. It was around 1.1, because you were holding some of it back for what exactly? Do you remember that?
So are you talking, just to, I can be clear, so a 1% tax increase is 1.2 roughly million dollars. If we were to take borrowing to replace that 1.2 million dollars rather than a 1% tax increase, is that, okay, sorry, okay.
So, so do you remember then, when you said if I was to, we were to borrow 1 point, I'm just gonna use the actual numbers we emailed on.
Right.
So it was, if we were to borrow 1.0, I think it was 9.5, or 1.85, I can't remember exactly, it wasn't allowed to use all of that money to fund other projects? There was a percentage held back for something?
120, yeah, 120.
Let's just call it something, and you can explain what it was.
Yeah, sorry. So we had talked about the $750,000 for MAP, and then there was three other projects that were transportation projects, and, and I think they came out to about 1.9 million in total. If we borrowed for that 1.9 million, with that, we would save that in the contribution to capital, that would roll backwards, but we would have to add an amount for debt servicing that was about $120,000.
Right, so that 120,000, you're adding that for debt servicing, but, so you're not paying the interest every year out of future tax revenue, you're setting it aside from the initial borrowing?
No, we're actually creating, no, the borrowing comes in specifically in its entirety to fund the project, and then we have to create this new line item in the operating budget that will be, that will be using tax, tax revenue to fund. So, because the borrowing comes into the capital, so with this imaginary wall, the borrowing has.
Quite a lar, it was quite a large number, though, so if you're borrowing 2 million, your interest in the first year is not going to be, you know, 120,000. So I was, I was curious where the number came from.
120,000 is just, we use the municipal finance authority amortization tables to, to, to calculate what a full year would be to borrow the 1.9 million, and it came out to, I think it was, you had 120,000, I had 127,000. And it came out to, I think it was, you had 120,000, I had 127,000. It comes out to approximately 127,000. Depends on when you borrow in the year. If you borrow late in the year, then you might only have half of that to pay in the first year.
Just wanted it to be clear that for council and the public's consideration, we're not, we're not paying that amount upfront or annually. It's, it's a relative, it's just a housekeeping item essentially.
We'd be paying it annually, we'd get it into the base initially, and then it would be in the base for the 20 years.
Right, that's kind of where I'm getting at, we're not, yeah, okay. So, then what we could do potentially is, is borrow that money for an optional capital improvement that at three, I think you were saying it was three and a half roughly was the interest rate? So, with inflation is currently around two?
I think it was 2.2.
So, it's pretty good, right? So, we're really only paying about 1% in terms of if we were to buy, build it today with borrowed money. And then we have inflation eating away at the real value of that principle. We're actually doing pretty well. If we can then go and spend that money on other projects that cost a lot today, that might increase more than 3% per year, does that make sense? So, we were to go build a traffic light that today is 500,000, in three years, that might be a $600,000 traffic light, or a $650,000 traffic light. We've actually saved a fair amount of money by borrowing at such a low amount.
Yeah.
Given what inflation's at, is that, would I be summarizing that well enough?
That would be, that would be correct. We, we had, MFA readjusts the interest rate after 10 years. So, depending on what happens in a 10-year period, it could go up quite significantly, or it could stay the same. It depends what.
We could potentially fund quite a, quite a few of these items with this kind of a, kind of a theory. Rather, you know, if some of us consider some of the McLeod stuff to be nice to have, not need to have, it would be nice to quote-unquote finish McLeod, but also look at that as a facility improvement, but also then fund a lot of other items that I consider to be pretty important, like the waste receptacles, so we're not being charged more by Metro Vancouver coming up. Where I think we're about a year or two behind on, on that original timeline. And some of these other items are pretty important to me. In terms of, like, I went and looked at a lot of the unfunded projects, and, and a lot of them had lines in there that if we don't do this soon, we could be looking at more money down the, down the road to remediate and fix after the fact, right?
Yeah.
And so, I just wanted to note that maybe it's time to mention that if I were to present to council's consideration sort of a budget amendment that I've been working on with Ms. Sinclair over the last little bit, how would you like me to present that? Would you like me to present that in a memo form for discussion on the 11th? Or should we postpone the budget one council meeting and debate that on the 11th? So, you can bring forward a finished bylaw? I've just, I'm open to however the, the council wants me to present that.
Maybe I can help with that. I, I think that's a great idea, if it was presented in a memo form to council. So, it's definitely, you could look at it at the 11th, we'd have a full council here then too, and have a chance to bring Councilor Whitmarsh up to speed on it. Certainly, there's lots to consider. There's always that balancing act of how much debt we're gonna take, because that needs to be serviced. And, yeah, it's a good idea to build it now, but if you don't have the money to service the debt, then sometimes you do have to wait, just like our own households, so.
Right.
So, it'd be good to have that information, so we can take good luck at it, and then get feedback from staff on, on that. I think that would be, that would be great, because then we could take it to the 11th.
So, so rather than, so what I was asking was, rather than have you prepare a bylaw on the 11th that we then just vary and amend, would it be more efficient for us to debate some other ideas, some of this meet on the 11th, and then delay by one council meeting, bringing forward final bylaws that aren't gonna change? So, just, just curious what you feel more is more efficient, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I think the, just what it says, that second part, then the amendments can be, though, that whatever you, whatever we decide based on whatever input any member of council has, or whether it's your member or anything else, then those can be put in as amendments, is that, would that be the process?
We could, we could do both on the 11th. That would be my preference, because we have only so many tax, or so many council meetings to get to setting of the tax rates for the taxes. But if we could do the, if we could work on the proposal, get it out to council maybe in advance, have some, some habit in advance, and then discuss it on the 11th, amend, do the amendments that we want to do on the 11th, and then in the evening of the 11th, head it, head into the amended bylaws.
And I think that that, we could certainly do that. You could, you could vet it essentially, so that council's not relying on my uninformed, uninformed opinion, you know, to rely on what the percentage implications would be and these kinds of things. You could vet that for me as a presentation, not a presentation, but something to present in written form for council's consideration. My concern, however, is that I would be trying to amend essentially a finished bylaw, and there would be some just resistance to that, because it's in a finished form, and I, and I wouldn't want it to be that way.
No, I, I think as it says here, and if you look at the, the motions, if, if it goes ahead, it says it would, after the amend, after the company made bylaws, based on the above resolutions and amendments. So, so we're not gonna bring a finished bylaw on the 11th. It's going to be the draft with, then we have that chance to make those amendments. And at that point, the direction would be to bring it, bring it back, is that correct? Because you're not gonna be bringing a finished bylaw on the 11th.
We would, we would, I would like to bring the bylaw in the evening if I could, on the 11th, but it could still be as amended. So, the discussions that we have in the day, in the, in the afternoon session, we could, we could roll into the, the evening bylaw.
We won't lose time, is what I'm trying to say, so number two.
I don't wanna lose time, but I also, I just, I just wanna make sure that it's not gonna be a huge amount of effort to try to amend something that's basically finished. So, you know, I haven't had the ability to wrap this up for today. I also didn't want to present it prior to receiving all the public input and this subsequent presentation. So, now, you know, I'm almost of the mind to ask for it to be delayed by one council meeting, but don't want to hold it up, in the sense that I don't want to be trying to amend essentially a finished draft bylaw, whatever you wanna call it, because it's basically packaged up and ready to go. And now here I am, try, you know, perception might be that I'm trying to amend it at the last minute.
Backen?
Worship, having had a flavour of some of the, the depth of the work that's been done, it leads to be considered. I'm a bit worried about trying to add to the 11th all, all this information. We can certainly craft some time on the 11th, but the 11th will be a fairly robust agenda as well. So, my, my suggestion is, given Karen is saying there's some tight timelines, I'm wondering about additional meeting dates this week, or next week, or maybe on the 12th or something, so we could actually just get this a bit, bit more of a balanced approach. Having had again a flavour for some of the depth of the items to be considered, I'm not sure that simply bringing it on the 11th and then trying to amend a bylaw on the fly is gonna work that well. I think the council's gonna need some time to reflect and digest, and maybe discuss this a bit. So, I'm wondering about additional meeting times between now and the 11th, or shortly thereafter.
The 4th is, is the next Monday between, and generally Mondays, I mean, I certainly can make changes. Is the 4th an optional date that we could come and do just a budget meeting?
That would, I think, work here, worship?
Yeah, if we can have a resolution on that date, that would work.
Okay, so, oh, there's a list of, of councillors which speak, so we'll go through this list before we make any of those decisions.
There's one important part for Councilor Woodward. Would that be sufficient time, though, to get your thought process around it? Because the 4th is a week away, I guess.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm actually just, was really holding back for this final presentation and the public consultation. I felt it was really important to incorporate public consultation feedback prior to presenting anything, and that's created this bit of a timeline council meeting bind. So, I don't want to present something until really reviewing this input. But yes, to answer your question more succinctly, yes, one week will be more than sufficient. I suspect I could have it submitted by the end of the week.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Richter?
Yeah, what, can we go back to the capital projects flagged by council for public consultation? So, in looking at the numbers here, it would seem to me that the public is not all that overly thrilled about doing anything with McLeod Athletic Park compared to, to 16th Street improvements. So, I'm wondering if we took, like, I know we have to do, what is it? 1.9 million of basic repairs to the park in order to host this. But if we freed up the, the other two, the other $3 million, can we fund these other projects that appear to have more priority to the public?
Yes, the, the funding source is reserved, so the answer would be yes.
Okay, so, would, is that something we would discuss next week? Just pulling McLeod Athletic Park out of the mix and using that money for something else? I mean, alternatively, we could probably also reduce the tax increase by 1% if we didn't spend 5 million on McLeod.
The amount of, of funds in McLeod Park project that's affecting the tax increase is 750,000. So, that would be the, the limit of what we could affect, which is 0.59% of the tax increase. So, of, of the 5.1 million, only, not only, it's a large, a large amount of money, 750,000 or 0.59% is coming from a tax-supported contribution to capital. The balance is coming from reserves.
Yeah, I know, but if we're not spending it, we can keep the taxes down, right?
By the 0.59, yes.
Okay, I, I'm not following that.
Your worship, I'll try. Think of it that of the 5 million dollars, only 750,000 is coming from operating, so roughly three-quarters of a percent. The rest is coming from reserves and other sources. So, if we actually take the reserves and other sources and reduce the taxes by that amount, pick any amount you like, the problem is next year, we have no money to do that again, because we've actually taken it one-time money. We've taken the savings account and applied it to buy groceries, and there's no more savings account at that point, because we've exhausted it. So, it's more prudent to actually simply take the money we're going to put into the savings account, redirect it, or take that off of the savings, because we're going to use that for operating.
Okay, well, I guess what I'm suggesting is, I don't think McLeod Athletic Park is a priority for the community compared to the 216th Street improvements. That's clearly a priority, and we should be, we asked them for their input, they gave it, we should be following what they want.
Worship, that leads to a very good question, which is because what would it then look like by doing only the field improvements? We've had a chance to analyze it a bit more, and on the Monday, the 4th, we could probably discuss in more detail the status of the facility. I know some people had a tour of it, and it maybe with only that level of improvements, we'd be better off to not proceed with the event, because it may not give the result we, we achieve, but we could have that debate later.
That's right, so, I think similarly to what Council Woodward's suggesting is a memo form. So, if any member of council has some ideas, all ideas are good ideas, put in a memo form, and then it gives the rest of council, like, you know, the opportunity to discuss and vote on it, so.
Well, no, I, I, I don't like this business of doing business by memos. We should be doing this in a, in a meeting, and if we have to have an additional meeting for budget purposes, then I think we should be scheduling that.
That's fair enough, I, you know, it's just, it's just helpful if council has your idea in front of them ahead of time, so that, so we have a good discussion at the meeting. Definitely has to come to the meeting, but, you know, not, not, don't want to.
Well, I, I, what's the rush to get this through on March the 11th?
There are some deadlines and some timelines that Ms. Sinclair has laid out to council, and I think the ultimate one is May 13th, is it, May 13th?
It's the, the tax rates. We typically give the taxpayers about five weeks, which means we have to mail out the tax notices by the, the latter part of May. So, we have to have the tax rates, need two council meetings to get passed. So, we kind of back up, back up from that date, and, and.
Okay, but we're gonna have more than two council meetings between March 11th and May 13th.
We need, we need two for the bylaws related to the budget, and then we need an additional two for the taxes. So, we need actually four.
So, we'll, we'll keep rolling up our sleeves, keep working on it. So, I think the 4th, once we get to that point, will be one, and if we need more, we'll have more. I'm quite willing to do that. All right, Council Long?
Well, boy, I don't understand the comments I'm hearing. Do you expect about no support from McLeod? There's, nobody said no, so that looks to me like most people are in favor of it. I'm wondering why, worship, we wouldn't just say, okay, there's been discussion about potential borrowing, and it's not a bad time to be borrowing. Could we not just go back to the slide that has projects in it that council wants to have done, and say to staff, get those done, and borrow a bit of money to make it happen? And bring back the budget on the 11th? I mean, I mean, is that too simple?
We can, we can do that too, it's just that.
Can we look at that slide first of all, and maybe, because I, you know, I mean, isn't that the end game? At the, you know, the end result is to get the, wouldn't be this one, it'd be the next slide, I think.
Well, one thing, I know, Council Long, that's a good idea. I think I personally wouldn't mind a little bit of time to get my head around some of the new ideas. And the 4th, unless it's a real problem for council, we can, you know, at least, at least have a good discussion.
Okay, thank you, and, but to simplify things, is that not what we're trying to do, is get these things on the list, and perhaps borrow to do that?
That's right, yeah.
Okay, but I don't know if we need a, to me, that's a little simpler, and, and I would be, and in fact, I, I thought that the 45,000 for the sidewalk was already in, we talked about it at the last meeting, but. So, what would it take to put all of these in? I guess you wouldn't put them all in, but you could put a majority of. Has staff done a calculation on what it would cost to put these in?
So, with the 4.95% that is on the table right now for our tax increase, we have 500,000, this 500,000 at the top of this page to deploy to any of these, any of these projects, to get them funded, to the unfunded column. So, we can, we can definitely bring in approximately 500,000 worth of these projects right now if we decide to, and it's still within the 4.95.
And then to get the rest of them done, we'd borrow?
Correct.
So, that would be a calculation that you could bring back on the 11th?
That's what I'm hearing, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, so on the same page, I think.
Okay, thank you.
We're in the same book, anyway.
Council Ferguson?
I'm glad, I'm glad we're all on the same page, so thank you very much. Thanks for the presentation from staff. I did wanna say that, again, I don't have to just go back, but that McLeod Athletic Park 5 in favor and 5 neutral doesn't seem to think that the, the community is opposed to it, or concerned about it. It's, you know, it's something we had a lot of discussion about, but that's, that was not what I wanted to mention, Mr. Mayor, is the fact that, you know, I think that what we're doing now is, is good, and I think it's a good idea that we do meet again and discuss the budget. I mean, and lawful law was said today by other members of council regarding borrowing and regarding getting information on that. I, I'm not a huge believer of borrowing money to lower taxes. I've never been a big believer of that. I always call that like a fool's game. I also wanted to know that is, if we get into discussions on what direction we go in, at this point in time, my question to the mayor to, to staff, is currently the Toolwaits funding, that's 3.1 million or something? That's currently outside the budget right now, is that correct?
It's deferred to 2020, yes.
Yeah, okay, that was, but that's still, you know, we haven't made the vote. That's still, I mean, I'm, that's a concern I have. I mean, if, if there's, if there's a couple of people in the room here, just let them know that's a concern I have, because I would like to see Toolwaits improved. I would like to see improvements made at Toolwaits, just so, you know, I, I don't want to complicate it by asking you a lot of questions and vetting, and sending you memos and doing other things, as was discussed earlier on. That's a concern, and, you know, if we're not gonna do it, when are we gonna do it? And, you know, I guess you're an accountant, how do you do things without money? And, you know, I don't have, I don't expect you to have an answer. That's a rhetorical kind of question. So, I think it's good that we continue our discussions, and, and I, you've answered my question, and, you know, I look forward to meeting again on the 4th.
Thank you. Council Woodward?
Yeah, I just want to add, I think that, I want, again, I want to thank you for some of the, the back and forth in terms of looking at some different ideas. I know that you've, you've been dealing with a lot of other inquiries from council. We gave you quite a long list. I don't, I don't think mine was quite as long, and I, and I appreciate the time you put into explaining some of the elements of the budget, so that I could come back with something that's well thought out and, and partially vetted. So, again, I want to thank you for that, not waste anyone's time. The way, I just wanted, just to let everybody know that it's a little more complicated than just borrowing money to pay for McLeod and then fund some other projects. I did have some, some proposals or considerations to re, redirect some of that prior year surplus, if you recall us looking at that, and also to potentially tweak some of the funding requests for additional staff. So, there, there was more to it than, than just that. And, and I just want to make sure everybody's, that everybody's aware of that. It was a little more complicated than just borrowing money to, to fund some capital projects. And I, and I didn't look at it as borrowing money to reduce property taxes. I would never actually propose that. What I looked at it was, and again, I thank you for this, was that it was borrowing money to pay for optional capital improvements, which we do a lot of. So, to me, borrowing money today to pay for a capital improvement is, is almost really visionary. And I keep using the example of Langley Event Center, what that would cost us today versus when we built it potentially ahead of when we actually needed it. So, again, I think that that's how I would phrase it, and I really look forward to getting that to council, and I'll try to get it to council sooner than Friday, thank you.
Okay, so, on this motion, I'll ask Ms. Bauer, if we were to make an amendment and change the words from regular afternoon to special meeting of council on March the 4th, would that be sufficient? So, I would ask for an amendment. Okay, it's been moved by.
Now, your worship, that motion would mean we're bringing bylaws on March the 4th. I don't think that was.
Considered as a draft financial plan.
So, I think what we would simply do is defer this item to a special meeting to be called on March the 4th?
Okay, so the motion to defer then, okay. Council Ferguson moves that second, Council Woodward, a discussion on deferral. Time of the meeting, I know Council Davis has a commitment, he has to be out here at 6, so it'll be during the day? Okay, okay, thank you. So, that'll call the question on F1. I think Ms. Bauer will set that up. What time do you expect?
We were thinking 1 o'clock, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll call the vote. Carries unanimously. So, it takes care of F1 then, in its entirety. Thank you very much. Move on to our presentation from staff. Well, without the first part, or the middle, middle part, I don't think we can move on with the last part of F1 to bring forward the bylaw. So, we'll carry on on the 4th.
Did I hear that we cannot meet in the evening for some reason? I'm sorry, did I hear that we cannot meet in the evening for some reason?
Council Davis is, is to fly out.
Oh, so the afternoon, okay.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so now we'll move on to the presentation.
Now, your worship, it is ten to six and there's still a sizable agenda to go. I'm just letting council know that we can start to defer some of these to the next meeting of council. This was actually scheduled today though because of a request of council. So maybe we want to proceed with that and maybe we don't. F four, F five, F three could all, I think, be deferred. They're not time sensitive. I think F six and F seven probably are because their parties are affected.
Okay, just, Council, yeah, let's have a go. Council Woodward, what's your?
Yeah, I just wanted to help with that. I was actually going to move and suggest that we receive the presentation regarding CACs, but then defer F two to April fifteenth to give me some time to, again, put together something in writing and deal with some of those responses after the presentation. So if, if we could just get the presentation done and then move F two to April fifteenth, that would help on today's agenda, just a suggestion.
Okay, so let's do the presentation and then we'll go on to the referrals and we'll see where we are at, at that point, our, our deferrals.
Okay, thank you. Then by way, brief introduction, your worship, we have Jason and Aubrey here. They're going to give you the presentation on the community amenity contribution policy that we've been working on. Jason, of course, is a wily veteran of these sessions. I think this is probably Aubrey's first session here, so we should at least give him some chance of hope going forward. We'll see how he performs and see if he wants to come back. Jason, did you have any initial comments?
Good afternoon, your worship, and members of council. So it was at the December third, twenty eighteen, regular evening meeting that council referred a notice of motion to staff to review and report back as soon as practical on the implications of revising the community amenity contributions framework. And there was six key points brought up in that notice of motion. One of them being increase the CAC contribution amounts by twenty percent. The second was exempting the Alder Grove core area from the CAC policy. Adding Alder Grove to the community amenity contributions policy is an additional amenity. Redefining the CAC policy as an amenity zoning bylaw. The fifth one was revising the grace period to a stepped up approach with three month intervals over a twelve month period. And the final item was imposing or implementing no increases to CACs for a number of years to a period of, or to a date of December, paraphrasing there, to a date of December twenty twenty-two. So a couple of frequently used terms that, that are, we're using through the presentation are community amenity contributions and density bonus zoning. Community amenity contributions, and I'll call them CACs, are amenity contributions agreed to by the applicant or developer and local government as part of a rezoning process. And these contributions are obtained if and when the local government decides to adopt the rezoning bylaw and the CAC policy is a township-wide policy. The other, another means of acquiring amenities is through density bonus zoning and this is intended to provide options for the developer to build at either a base density, which can be the existing zone, or a higher level of density, which could be the new zone if certain amenities are provided. And an example would be the neighborhood-specific greenway amenity policies, which we call the gaps. Some legislative context, in twenty fourteen, the province published a guide to help local governments understand the risks and challenges and recommended practices related to obtaining CACs. And there's currently three typical strategies identified in this guide that are used to see amenities. And these are, the three here are density bonus provisions, which that one has authority under the Local Government Act. The other two and three are both community amenity contribution programs, just a difference in how the, the rates or the fees would be collected. CAC amounts in number two are based on fixed amounts for properties being rezoned on a per unit basis. And the third one is CACs based on the land lift, which is the increase in value of land resulting from the rezoning. So it was in, following the September two thousand sixteen notice of motion that staff prepared a CAC policy and it was based on approach number two, which was the target CAC amounts for properties being rezoned on a per unit basis. Building on that background, following the notice of motion from September twenty sixteen, staff prepared a CAC policy and it was adopted last year on July twenty-third, twenty eighteen. This was following a public engagement process that involves stakeholders in the development industry and the general public. This included the Urban Development Institute and a public open house. So the first item in the notice of motion is a twenty percent increase to the CAC contribution amounts. This table here outlines what that looks like between the current and then the proposed, which would be the twenty percent increase, and then what the difference would be. So single family would see a per unit increase of about eleven hundred dollars per unit. Townhouse would see an increase of around nine hundred and sixty dollars per unit. Apartment low rise at seven hundred and fifty-six dollars per unit and apartment high rise at five hundred and eighty-five dollars per unit. And a key point here is that this increase results in a overall net increase of eighteen million dollars into the CAC fund. This slide here is showing a comparison of the township's current contribution amounts and the current policy in comparison to some municipalities in the metro Vancouver area that also have a, a per unit or square foot calculation. Abbotsford is in the process of determining CACs per unit, so there's no data to report out there at the moment. Coquitlam and Maple Ridge are identified in the following two categories, which are closely in line with what the township has. Then we have Port Moody and Richmond where we can see they, they start to increase. And Surrey has a wide range from a hundred and fifty dollars per unit to two thousand and one hundred and fifty dollars per unit. Yes.
Surrey's wide range, how, why would they have a wide range?
They have maybe thirty different policy areas identified.
Okay.
And so it ranges greatly from multifamily units to single family units. So some neighborhoods are quite lower than, than others.
So it's by neighborhood, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I chose the median instead of an average. So the median there is, is around fourteen hundred.
Okay, thanks.
A second item in the notice of motion is the exemption for the Alder Grove core area and a revised CAC policy framework could provide that exemption. The plan for the Alder Grove core area currently estimates a future population growth of approximately five thousand persons or twenty-two hundred units. And the policy calculates the amounts based on those number of units. So the dollar figure associated with those twenty-two hundred units is roughly ten point five million dollars, which would be foregone in CAC revenues. And this, the collection of these revenues would be distributed to other communities. This graphic just indicates the current CAC policy and how it looks. There's currently seven different communities where the, that would contribute to the CAC program through new development. And the potential value of the CAC contributions is approximately at a hundred and forty-four million. And so as these CACs are collected, they would be allocated into different amenities with eighty percent going towards the neighborhood-specific amenities and the other twenty percent going to the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund. Based on a revised CAC policy framework, there would be six communities contributing to the, to the policy as a result of Alder Grove potentially being exempt. The overall increase in CACs, the additional eighteen million would bring the total contributions to a hundred and sixty-two million potentially. And then the reallocation of funds to account for an additional amenity would see a redistribution as follows, with seventy-four percent going to the existing community amenities, fifteen percent going to the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund, and then eleven percent going to the new Alder Grove, Alder Grove core amenity area. And this table is showing that there is, if we did add an Alder Grove amenity fund, it would essentially fit in as a third amenity and it has a value of around eighteen million dollars based on that twenty percent increase. Another important point here is to show that the percentage breakdown, the reason that those numbers are as they are is that they're maintaining the funding to the existing amenities. So we have a hundred and twenty million going to the, to the current CAC amenity fund. It changes from eighty percent to seventy-four percent, but the dollar value stays the same. And the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund, which has a value of twenty-four million, the allocation would change from twenty percent to fifteen percent, but the key point is that the funding stays the same. And overall, the program increases from a hundred and forty-four million to a hundred and sixty-two million. With the addition of the Alder Grove core area amenity fund, there are a range of items identified in the Alder Grove core area plan that could assist in the revitalization of a downtown Alder Grove. And so within the, the plan, there's policies that speak to revitalization tools and incentives. I won't go into the subbullets there in the report and for the sake of time, I'll keep it short. And there's implementation items that, that speak to a series of other items that could be undertaken. So it's in light of these policies that further study is recommended to determine the best use of amenity funds to incentivize redevelopment. Another item brought up in the notice of motion is the transition of the current CAC policy from a, a policy into an amenity zoning bylaw. The CAC policy, as it currently stands, has been developed based on the provincial government's best practice guide for CACs, which is intended to help local governments understand the limits of legislative authority when it comes to negotiating CACs. And it's noted in that guide that municipalities do not have authority to require CACs as they're intended to be negotiated. So there are two tools that have statutory authority as per the Local Government Act and these are density bonusing and phased development agreements. And so density bonusing, as mentioned earlier in the presentation, is a practice for obtaining amenities from developers through the rezoning process. And this method has statutory authority as per the Local Government Act. Today, around the region, this practice is typically implemented in neighborhoods better suited to high-density forms of development, such as high-rise development. The phased development agreement provides another method of obtaining CACs. This process has statutory authority as per the Local Government Act with an illegal and transparent framework for securing CACs. The process requires council approval in the form of a bylaw that would require a public hearing. So as the CAC policy is not enforceable, it is recommended that the township use CACs as the tool for negotiating amenity contributions and use the phased development agreement as the mechanism with statutory authority to secure those contributions. A fifth item in the notice of motion is a proposed revision to the grace period. Revising the grace period from the current twelve months to a phased approach stepping up at three month intervals requires consideration of what is called the doctrine of legitimate expectations. And this refers to the expectation or promise that a public authority will follow a certain procedure and act fairly in the implementation of that promise. And while it's within a local government's authority to revise the policy grace period, it would be expected, given these doctrine of legitimate expectations, that consultation with affected developers be undertaken. So for these reasons, it's proposed that the current twelve-month grace period remain in place for rezoning applicants who have submitted their applications prior to the adoption of the CAC policy on July twenty-third, twenty eighteen. And then the second key point is that it is recommended that all rezoning applications received after the adoption of the current CAC policy, those would be subject to any amendments that are forthcoming following public engagement with affected applicants. And the final item in the notice of motion is to hold target contribution amounts steady for the remainder of the current council term or a period of three years or whichever is shorter. This includes no annual adjustments for inflation during this period as identified in the current CAC policy. And annual inflationary increases receive support in consultation with the development industry. So it would, once the freeze is, is lifted, then it would be expected that annual inflationary adjustments would continue. So in summary, the proposed provisions, it was proposed to increase the target contribution amounts by twenty percent. This would generate an additional eighteen million in CACs to be used for additional amenities. It was proposed to exempt the Alder Grove core area from the policy. This would redistribute financial burden of ten point five million to other communities. It was, it is proposed to add a new Alder Grove core amenity fund. It's, further study is recommended to determine the best use of funds to incentivize development. The, the fourth one is to redefine the policy as an amenity zoning, amenity zoning bylaw. And it is recommended that phased development agreements be used as the CAC collection tool. And the fifth one, revise the grace period to a step-up approach. It is recommended that consideration be given for compliance with the principles of legitimate expectations and prior consultation with the development industry. And the final one, freeze target contribution amounts would result in no increase in CAC amounts till twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
Questions from council? Council Ferguson?
Thank you. Can you go, if I may, thank you through the chair, back to your comparison slide about the, where Surrey and Richmond and Port Moody? Okay, yeah, so you've got pretty well five. You don't have like, yeah, you do have Coquitlam, but you don't have Delta or you don't have some of the other ones. Is there a reason why you didn't go to more depth comparison?
Some of the other ones are, are ad hoc, so it, it happens through a negotiation process without any, any policy identifying what a, what a rate or a contribution amount should be. Others don't have community amenity contribution policies, but might go about the same thing through a density bonusing policy. So I've shown the ones that have an easy to compare dollar amount and then also kept it kind of within the, the local area per se.
No, I understand that. My, my question is, how long has Richmond, Port Moody, Maple Ridge and Surrey, how long have they been doing their CACs?
Surrey's is several years. I don't know the exact date, but it's a fairly well-established one. Coquitlam's would be, I think, around the twenty-ten, twenty-eleven mark. Maple Ridge is fairly new, so twenty thirteen, fourteen, I think. And Port Moody's is fairly new, I think, twenty sixteen. So some of them are fairly new.
So we're twenty nineteen now and we haven't really collected much, anything yet, right?
No, no, as of yet, no, as we're still.
So we, we're way behind the eight ball on a lot of these things. It's, well, the eight ball, so we are, and I was just looking at, I mean, a huge, like the Richmond is just so much higher, there is, was there any justification for that?
I didn't look any further into how they're balancing that with, say, a possible density bonus policy. So the rates or the, these contribution amounts tend to go up as, as you get closer to Vancouver. So the North Shore, those, that first ring of suburb communities tend to have much higher contributions.
Because it really raises something up because when folks who build and stuff say, oh, why are you doing that? I mean, almost, you know, the first thing there, as they say, maybe they're, you know, they're saying something quickly, so we haven't done our research or otherwise, we're just showing that we don't know what's being out there. And they're either, you know, they, they aren't either building in Richmond or Port Coquitlam or they aren't aware of what's else is out there. Anyway, thank you very much. It's an excellent report.
Thank you. Council Director?
Yeah, this doctrine of legitimate expectations, is that legally required of us?
Based on, on legal counsel, it's something that was recommended to follow through with consultation if we were to make any changes.
Okay, but there's no law anywhere that specifies this doctrine, is there?
Mr. Backen?
What, what we're referring to is Liston and Company's analysis in terms of the common law, which is if there's going to be changes in government process and it's going to affect people monetarily, there ought to be a notice period. And as we've engaged in a notice period for the first set of CACs, they're suggesting something to meet that doctrine of legitimate expectation in the second set. It doesn't mean that it needs to be done, it's just then becomes at the peril of the community in the event it was to be challenged. That's the challenge we face and that could be discussed in more detail by Mr. Liston.
Yeah, well, I guess, I, I guess what I'm just trying to get at is this doctrine of legitimate expectations. It's the first I've heard of it and I just wondered if it was a legal requirement on us by a higher level of government.
It, it is in a developing area and the short answer is that there is elements of it that certainly apply and some that are still under development.
Thank you.
Council Woodward?
Yeah, I want to thank you for putting so much work into reviewing this. I've actually learned a fair bit more since I first drafted that notice of motion. So I, again, I'm going to take some more time with this, but some, while you're here, a couple of questions. I've never seen this before, so the, some people actually charge per square foot. And you're estimating based upon what, average unit size that you think we're going to be seeing, that you come up with our per square foot?
Correct, at, at this point in time, it's a ballpark.
So if people started building like five-story, sorry, five-bedroom units, two thousand, then they're going to pay the same as someone who builds a four hundred square foot apartment, essentially. So that's kind of interesting. And our DCC program, I believe, has the same, the same structure. So Richmond compared to Langley, like what a, what a great deal Langley is. And to go from one sixty-two to maybe two dollars isn't necessarily, you know, all that big a deal by looking at this. So could I also look at the other one, which, where you showed the, the amount of money, you had Alder Grove exempt with a big stamp on it? And the, this one here, yeah, so this is really quite helpful. So I think the words you used kind of troubled me a tad, like redistributing the financial burden to other communities from the development in Alder Grove. But if we have. But if we have no development in Alder Grove, then we're not redistributing anything because we're just simply not generating anything from Alder Grove in terms of CACs. So you're assuming that Alder Grove develops to its full capacity when there's a statement or a summary like that?
The policy is based on projected growth in all of the communities outside of, of actual timelines, but it's a, it's a theoretical concept.
Right. So most, I think it's true, I haven't, I haven't looked recently, but most of the amenities in the CAC are Willoughby-based amenities?
They, we could go to that slide. There, some of them are township-wide, some are Willoughby and Brookeswood.
Okay, can you go back to the other slide, please? So if, if, say, let's just pick a number, 80% of those amenities are Willoughby-based amenities, then when there's development in Fort Langley, Walnut Grove, and in rural areas, those developments are subsidizing or, what did you say, redistributing the financial burden? Like, so they're contributing, these communities, as you called it, are contributing to the CAC fund, but really don't see, don't see amenities coming back from it. So this principle already exists in the policy that we're taking CAC revenue from, say, one, Murrayville, and we're putting it mostly into Willoughby. So really, we're already kind of doing that? Is that fair?
Yeah, and as I noted in this slide, it is possible to exempt other areas and have different CAC policies for different neighborhoods or different communities.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify. So the next thing too was if you could go to the density bonusing in regards to the high rises. Yeah, so this one here regarding, yeah, so 4.1 there, density bonusing better suited to higher density development. And this is a bit of a, so the, the amenity zoning bylaw I've learned since then is, it's had more complicated than, than I realized before. So I think this one is something that can definitely be revisited. But the problem our current CAC problem issue has when, say, someone has a townhouse site in Willoughby and they apply for a high-rise because it makes sense for us to see one that a high-rise maybe makes sense for transportation and transit and DCC revenues, maybe get some more green space out of that. Our CAC policy is not capturing that extreme land lift. That's, and that would be, is there any other way we can do that outside of negotiating on a per basis? Because one of the concerns I have is that the CAC policy on a fixed rate, fixed rate per unit, doesn't capture this massive land lift.
In some other municipal examples, CACs are applied as a base, particularly in areas where you might have that opportunity for high-rise development. So you would apply CACs across the board to single-family townhouse. Specifically, I'm talking about the Coquitlam example. So single-family townhouse, single apartment up to a certain density, all pay CACs on a per-square-foot basis. And then after a certain point, then a density bonusing program is, is used to then capture additional density.
Then just another slide you mentioned, I'm almost done. Funding listed amenities, so you're projecting the per-unit cost based upon the amenities we specifically want to fund from the program? And then you're coming out to the per-unit cost. Is that where the pure per-unit cost comes from? I think you mentioned that somewhere. Funding listed amenities and you have a cost, and then you target that funding.
Yeah, essentially, there's a pool of money for existing amenities. Sorry, that was, this slide is in reference to what we were just talking about.
So we would have to, we would have to cover density bonusing policy separate from fixed-rate CACs?
It's potential.
Potentially, yeah. Okay, so we just, and then, but getting back to this issue of where the amounts come from?
Yeah, the, the amenities were defined and then a cost value given, a capital cost value given to those. And then using OCP policy and our population projections, basically those two, one was divided by the other to come up with a cost per person. And then based on average household sizes from the census, we can determine, translate that cost per person into cost per unit. So as we tinker with units and population, then the, the rates redistribute.
So if we add more amenities to the, to the program, then you would need to necess, you would, you might need to go back and increase the per, the per, per unit charge in order to fund those amenities?
Yes, if you did that, then it would change the, the cost, the CAC amount per unit.
Okay, and that's kind of what we're doing with the Alder Grove ideas, right? Is we're adding a, a separate list of amenities that we specifically want to target for Alder Grove, which probably would get missed with all the pressure we face in, in infrastructure in Willoughby. That's kind of what we would do, right? We would create a list of amenities specific to a revitalizing area and then create a category for that. Similar, that would make sense in a way. Theoretically fit quite well with the intent of the policy.
Essentially, that third category with the 20% increase has now a value attached to it. And then it would be defining what those amenities would be within that, that sort of dollar amount.
Versus, say, for example, adding Alder Grove items into the main amenity list, and now Alder Grove's competing with their new police station or other items in Willoughby that are, where more people live. So politically, they're going to have more influence.
That's an option.
Okay, so the, one of my last ones, again, was in, in regards to this doctrine of legitimate expectations in consultation with the development community. So it wasn't in your presentation, but correct me if I'm wrong, it was in the written report that suggesting a year or a year and a half of consultation with developers based upon this doctrine of legitimate expectations? Did I, did I have that right? It was a relatively long timeframe.
The time period wouldn't be defined, but I guess it would be to give the, consultation would be required regardless of any amendment to the grace period. But specifically right now, given that the, the first, like, the initial grace period, the 12-month grace period hasn't yet run its course. So it's kind of, essentially, there's two grace periods. There's one for those that applied before the policy, had a rezoning application in stream before the policy was adopted. And then a, a second ongoing grace period for any amendment that would occur after it's been adopted. So once we get through the one-year mark, that, that consultation, that part of the policy becomes ineffective, essentially. And then it's just, it would just be a regular consultation.
Yeah, and it certainly wasn't my, I, I don't, I think it was in the report there somewhere. It was never my suggestion that we go back and, and layer on new fees for people that have already received third reading. That was never my, never been intent, so I want to clarify that. And then, but, but this doctrine of legitimate expectations, I mean, when you're, I think I structured the policy so I was essentially front-loading inflation, right? So the 20% number was a nice round number. We don't do any inflationary increases for a period of years. That could be extended slightly. We're, we're not really increasing them. We're sort of in front-loading inflation. And I thought that I would skip this year, or maybe naively, skip this year or a year and a half to go get UDI's permission to, you know, amend our community amenity contribution policy. And this doctrine, I'll, I'll look for some more information on that. But I find it a bit interesting that, you know, developers lobbyist group's going to get a year and a half, yet if I want to build a high-rise next to your house, I've got two weeks and a public hearing. So, I mean, I, I find that to be a bit interesting, so I'm going to look a bit more into that. Can you, can you comment, though, is it really, do you really feel it's necessary for something that I thought I had structured as a front-loaded inflationary increase?
I didn't look at the, one thing I could have looked at would be how many years of inflationary increase would it take to equal the 20% increase and see where those two lines on a graph cross?
That'd be interesting. So, so then, this is one last little thing, is that one issue with these inflationary increases in the amenity policy, of course, is land costs are increasing at a significantly higher rate. So if we're planning inflationary increases, we're going to put aside, you know, this 100 million or 50 million to build a police station and a library and something else. Then we're going to get there 20 years from now and not be able to afford to buy the, really buy the real estate to actually build that amenity. And I think that's a bit of my concern here, is that we're, we're seeing land costs accelerate or increase at such a rate that these amenity policies can never keep up. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Long?
So we're just receiving this report, and we're going to discuss it at a future meeting, so I don't know how much longer we're going to go. But I did want to say that there was a, a suggestion earlier that up until now, we haven't been collecting CACs, but we have been in the other group, well, that slide that you showed of the other communities. We've been in that group for many, many years, negotiating individually with developers and getting community amenities out of them, not necessarily on a percentage or a set rate or a per-square-footage. So I'd just like to make sure that that's reinforced to council, that this isn't something new or that we've been leaving money on the table. So can you expand upon how it's been done a little bit prior to the last few years? Because we have been collecting, I guess through bonus densities and through other, other mechanisms, community amenities. Is that correct?
Thank you, Your Worship. We have been collecting Greenway amenity charges from various neighborhoods since 2007, and the discussion is subject of a report later on in the meeting. So we're collecting some amenities, but there are, those are neighborhood-specific amenities, whereas we're talking about a township-wide contribution program. So monies or development from other parts of the township would go towards this particular community amenity contribution program versus neighborhood-specific Greenway amenity program.
So the, the community, and you're right, it's a, a future report or later on, but the concept would be to keep both?
That's correct. The concept is to keep both. Obviously, one, again, is a CAC program, and then the other is the Greenway amenity policy. There's also a capture in the Murrayville area for a pedestrian overpass in the hospital area. So that's just another close example of what we've been collecting.
Thanks. Thanks. Council Artisan?
Yes, thank you, Worship, and thank you very much for putting it together in such an accessible manner. I think it's great to have this opportunity to discuss the creative use of CACs. I think especially around budget time when we start talking about our infrastructure needs and our growing community, it's a, a great opportunity to consider accelerating the process. So my only thought about it is that when we get sort of more details and time to digest all of this and a finalized report should be going as soon as possible to UDI, I know there's liaison meetings, and to give them the substance of what's being discussed at the earliest opportunity. Because I, I do know from talking to developers that their mantra is really looking for certainty about the economics of their situation. And so on balance, I understand that they would like to know as soon as possible, obviously, if we're going to change some of the policies. But generally, I'm very supportive of this.
Thank you. Okay, this time I'll ask for, thank you very much for your presentation and appreciate, it was very detailed and, and I think we all learned a lot on it. Just a motion to receive the, the presentation. Get moved by Councilor Woodward, second by Councilor Davis. I'll just call the, call the vote. I don't think there's any discussion on receipt. Unless there is.
Your Worship, just quickly, receipt, but is it going to be discussed at a future meeting?
Well, I'm just going to do F, I'm just going to do D2, and then F2, I'm going to, I'm going to do a deferral. That'll help, I think. Okay, it's unanimously. So I would ask for motion to defer F2, F3, F4, F5 to March 11th.
I wanted to, sorry.
Sorry, where are we here? Council Woodard?
Yeah, I would just, maybe separately, I'd like to defer F2 to the April 15th council meeting to, to give me a bit of months to, to work on it further.
Okay, okay. So you make that motion then?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, secondar, okay. So F, so I'm going to call a separate vote. Any discussion on that? Seeing that, I'm going to call a question on deferring F2 to April 15th afternoon meeting. And that carries with Councilor Long opposed. So F3, F4?
Your Worship, I think we may be able to get F5 done unless there's some discussion on that. I'm just, we'll defer to council, so if we can defer F3, F4 and four?
Right now, okay. To March 11th, motion please. Council Woodward, second. Council Kuntz, discussion. Call a question on F3. Oh, sorry. Did, I, I call it, I'm going to, I'm going to call it again. F3, okay, sorry, I called, if you can push your buttons again. That was a little bit too quick there. Carries with Councilor Richter opposed. Okay, so now we move on to F5. Could I have a motion, please? Council Davis, second by Councilor Kuntz, discussion on F5. Seeing that, I'll call it, oh, everyone's talked about it. Council Davis?
Okay, just, we, we know that this is in not, this is not in, in priority order. This is just six of them, and, yeah, I just wanted to.
Yeah, and the report, yeah, basically from Mr. McIntosh's presentation has our priorities, and it has the next ones, the next ones, if we look at the report. Yeah, thanks. Council Richter?
Yeah, under the next category, there were some items missing, including Fraser Highway, the Fraser Valley Library Master Plan, the Parks and Rec Master Plan, and the capital funding strategy. And I'm just curious as to why they were not included.
Mr. Backen?
Your Worship, I think that's just a recital of what was previously given. This resolution, though, is simply resetting the top six priorities. We're not getting to the next ones at this point. They'll come back in their entirety as we get to the next level.
Great, all thanks to that clarification. Okay.
But shouldn't the category include all of them that was on the, on the?
So the category of next will have to be revisited. It's not being received at this point. Right now, we're simply receiving or confirming the top six strategic priorities that were outlined.
Oh, we're doing, not the next ones. Okay. Okay, I'll call a question on F5. Carries unanimously. Go to F6, Agricultural Land Commission application, Simpson. This is number 100370. Councilor, sorry, who moved that? Councilor Long, second? Can I have a second? Or Councilor Kuntz, discussion. Council Davis?
Okay, is? How many residents are on this one piece of property? And how many are legally allowed to be there?
Legally allowed?
Questions to staff?
To, yeah, Mr. Richardson?
There's only two there now. They took the mobile out of, off.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'll call a question on F6. Carries unanimously. F7, similar Agricultural Land Commission application, 100366. Have a motion, please? Have a motion? Councilor Long, second by Councilor Woodward, discussion. Council Davis?
Okay, again, how do we regulate short-term tourist accommodations? It doesn't just turn into a residence. How do we do that? How, like?
So how do we regulate bed and breakfast? Mr. Backen or Mr. Richardson on regulation for bed and breakfast, that's our question.
Thank you, Worship, through to Councilor Davis. So the zoning bylaw allows for bed and breakfast use. They'd have to come in and apply for a business license, and that would be in compliance with our business license program and through bylaw enforcement.
Okay, so I guess it's a, it's just on the license, the license. And if there is a problem, then we have the license, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call a question on F7. Carries with Councilor Artisan opposed. Move on to F8, Greenway Amenities zoning policy update. And this is to reflect current values of land. Mr. Backen, did you wish to say something before?
If it requires any debate, we may want to defer that, Your Worship. I'm not sure what council's position is.
All right. Okay. We can do this March 11th, I think. We move deferral if we need to defer, is there a reason for April 15th? But there's two separate issues.
Let's get the money now. Let's raise it as soon as possible.
Okay, we'll move it to March 11th, and if it needs to be deferred further. Okay, so a motion from Council Ferguson, secondar, to defer. Council Davis, just, Council Richter, did you wish to speak to the deferral?
Nope.
Okay. Call a question on F8 deferral. Carries unanimously. We have two items correspondents, G1 and G2. Could I have a motion to receive both?
I'll move them both, and can we throw in the motion because we've run out of time on number two?
To approve, can we do that, Miss Power? So receive and, and the direction for G2? Okay, so Councilor Long moves that, secondar, Councilor Artisan. I'll call the question. Carries unanimously, and we have minutes of committees. Each one is Heritage, Recreation, Culture. Could I have a motion for each one? Council Davis, second. Council Artisan, discussion. Council Richter?
Yes, I was wondering, the cemetery plan that they looked about, oh, no, I guess this is not, oh, yeah, that was Heritage. When is that cemetery plan coming to council for review?
To Backen? Or staff?
Through, Your Worship, to Council Richter, we are currently working on a staff presentation. Either scheduled for the one meeting in March or April.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll call a question on H1. Carries unanimously. H2, there's a recommended motion from the Heritage Advisory Committee. Could I have a motion? Council Long, second. Council Davis, discussion. Council Richter?
Yeah. Oh, no, sorry.
I'm going to need a motion to extend a few minutes. Could I have a motion to extend five minutes? Council Davis, second by Council Woodard? Oh, sorry, and all those in favor of extension? Post carried. Thank you. Council Richter?
No, this, I meant to hit Parks and Rec, sorry.
Okay, Council Davis on the Heritage?
Does anybody know why Hogs Alley, his name's Hogs Alley? Hog Alley? No, because they used to pre-range hogs in that area. And 15, ironically, 20 years ago, a truck went off to the ditch right in Glover and Hogs Alley there. There was 50 or 60 pigs in the ditch, and we had to all gather them up. It was kind of ironic. It was right at Hogs Alley.
Thank you for that. So I'm going to call, so we have H2. It's been moved and seconded, yeah. So I'm going to call the question on H2 after that. History lesson. Thank you. And carries unanimously, H3, and there is a endorsed draft recreation. And carries unanimously, H3, and there is a endorsed draft recreation, Culture and Parks work plan, could I have a motion, please? Council Davis, second by Council Ferguson, discussion, Council Richter?
Yes, I'm a little concerned about the dry floor space availability that was discussed on page eight at this meeting, and I know we're having a delegation later this evening. But the reference in the minutes to getting a premier soccer team here, before we start doing things like that, do we do a facilities assessment to make sure we're not going to be bumping our kids off the playing fields?
Becken?
Effectively, that's correct, Your Worship. The challenge with other sorts of users, the, the premium users, if you want to call them that, is the cost of the infrastructure, so there's a built-in check, and that would require some sort of funding before we even get to that stage.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, call a question on H3. Carries unanimously. And I1 is minutes from the CP advisory panel, could I have a motion, please? Davis, second by Council Arneson, discussion, call a question on I1. Carries unanimously. We have one minute for other business, unless we can wait till the evening of the business. Council Richter?
Yes, I'd like to move referral to staff of the unsightly premises bylaw to remove the 250-meter radius restriction in that bylaw.[1741.01]